I'd like to welcome everybody to today's workshop. We're dealing with non-departmental requests today. We'll begin with that and then we'll probably have enough time to begin questioning some of the directors in their departments.
Thank you.
I don't know how far we'll get with the departments, but we'll do that following the non-departmental request. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda by Mr. Lawrence.
Second?
Second by Mr. McGilvery. And discussion. All in favor? Okay, just for the record, Ms. Newman is not here yet. Thank you.
It's a difficult call.
Yeah, no, I like these.
All right, that brings us to the mayor's report. Another outstanding report, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Go to the council report.
Wait, let me repeat that so the microphone, no report.
Okay. Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, a question of the mayor. A couple people live on Comfort Place that's not paved in between Lee and Keller. They want to build some houses on there. Is there any way we can look at getting that paved? Between Lee and Keller, Comfort Place.
What, where you at? Lee and Comfort Place, that's still in the case zone? Paving between Lee and Comfort Place? On Lee, at Comfort Place? That's not on the case.
They kind of leveled out the dirt and everything.
On Lee Street, sir? That was on Lee Street?
Comfort Place, yeah. Comfort Place runs across all the way to Lee. But from Lee-
South side of railroad tracks?
No, no. Yeah, right there off the beach. Comfort Place comes off Lee. Howard Avenue goes across.
Look at that. It's where they want to build a Comfort Place. Is that it?
No, I don't know.
So, I'm sorry, what was the question, councilman?
I was trying to see if we could get that paved because they just finished that poolplex right there on the corner of Lee and Comfort Place and now they want to build some other houses on. And they just want to know if you could actually pave from Lee to Keller.
Okay, to Keller. That's east, going east, right?
Going right. Yeah, Comfort Place going the other way.
Yes, sir, that's not in one of our current projects, sir.
It's just a path now, right?
Right. Yeah, no, it's just they kind of put the dirt, smoothed out the dirt, it's dirt.
Yeah, it's not in our current, it's in a future project, that area.
So, you finished like any pipe work, anything else you have to do underground there?
I don't think we had any underground plans or anything right there. It was just an alleyway as I remember. Going to Keller Avenue from Lee Street. We'll look at that.
Yes, we'll look into it, but right now, it's not under the current limits of the NECA's contract. It's in a future project, but-
All right, so we'd have to just do it on the city.
Yeah, we got paving.
All right. I wanted to bring that up and put that on the table because a couple, I had a couple calls this week and said, hey, we want to build houses, that's good for us, you know? So, that's a good thing.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Gines?
Okay, I just want to see Ms. Christie after this is over with. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gines. Mr. McGilvery? No report. Thank you, sir. Mr. Glavine?
I just have a couple things. The first one is for Director Creel. There's a new development off of Brody Road. I think they're proposing 72 single-family homes. And this is just an easy thing. Can I get the, request the current zoning-
Yes, sir.
-on that property? And do you know if it's going to have two points of ingress and egress or will it be one entrance in and out? Do you happen to know that?
It'll have to have two. If it's more than 30 houses, it'll have to have at least two means of ingress and egress. And we have not been provided with a site, it hasn't even been to DRC yet, so-
Understand. So, we're just going through the wetland issue with the Corps?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Director. And is Christie here? I'll defer that. I have a question for her, but I can get that answer later. That'll conclude my report for today.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Mr. Shoemaker?
And no report.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. And my only comment is that I'd like to thank the mayor and his staff, particularly Stacy Thacker, for preparing the budget. Budget binders we got, thank you. Great idea. Got to remember that for next year. And Diana, thank you.
Stayed last year, too.
Okay. Yeah, I know we had one last year. It'd be great to have them at the beginning, very beginning of the process, so it would help us. Thank you. That concludes my comments. At this point, we move to the public agenda for citizens' comments. Is there anybody on my left, your right, that would like to speak? And let me say that we're going, when we get to non-departmentals, if you're here to speak about your non-departmental, I would say save that for when we start covering non-departmentals. But this, these are for general comments at this time, okay? Anybody on my left, your right? Yes, sir.
Are we done with departmental? No?
Not, not yet.
Not yet, right? Well, thank you. I'm here on behalf of Back Bay Mission. I'm the director and I want to say thank you to all of you. We received $50,000 last year to do rehabs throughout Biloxi and we did 50 in 2023, 68-
James, excuse me, just one.
Oh, sure.
Could you save this until we get to non-departmentals?
Oh, sure.
Right now, these are for-
I'm in Jerry Creel.
Sorry, go ahead.
It's okay. Thank you. Oops. Yep, whoops. So, we did about 50 in 2023, 68 this year total as far as rehabs. We call it homeless prevention because we're keeping people in their homes, doing the kind of repairs they need. So, we're grateful for that $50,000 and ask that you continue to fund us at that same level unless you can find a little bit more money for us somewhere. We're always grateful for that. So, again, grateful for the support that you give Back Bay Mission and grateful that we can serve the community. Any questions?
My apologies. Thank you.
No, it's okay.
Thank you, Diana, for pointing that out.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on my left, your right?
Or I can open-
Yes, ma'am. Come up to the, come up to the mic so the whole world can hear you.
This is where I speak to the St. Patrick's Day parade or is that later? Later. That's what I wanted to-
That's okay. Anybody, anybody else on my left, your right? Anybody else on my right, your left? Anybody in the back? Cold hand gripped my heart with that voice in the back there. Thank you. All right, that concludes citizen's comments. We'll move to the policy agenda and we're going to cover non-departmentals first. Julia, if you'll come up, I know you have to be somewhere, so we'll get you out of the way. Do we have a sheet on this call?
Good afternoon. Julia Richardson, I sit on the board for Reese for Biloxi National Cemetery. I don't know if my counsel or my mayor's had an op, no, I know Mayor Fofo's been out there and I appreciate your coming out and supporting. It's Reese, I know we've all heard of Reese across national, Reese across America. So, this Reese for Biloxi National Cemetery, it's a grassroots effort and we felt the National Association needed a little bit of help and there's nothing like someone from Biloxi to get the job done, right? So, with our group, we are able to cover every grave there at the Biloxi National Cemetery. And there's over 30,000 graves at this moment. And it's, we're very proud of it. It's a three-day event. It's one of the largest voluntary events that's happened here on the Mississippi Gulf Coast that they come across Alabama, Louisiana, Florida, Arkansas. We've had ones from Ohio that's come, but they're here, they come every year. It's always the first Saturday of the month in December when we lay the Christmas reefs. But it's a, it's a three-day event now. It's turned into a big event and we're quite proud of it. You come out that Saturday, get your reef, place it on a hero's grave and it's wonderful. But we're just asking for some financial support because those reefs are not free and neither are the boats. So, every year, we pick them up, take good care of them, but sometimes with the weather here in South Mississippi, you know how that goes, we have to replace them. So, that's what we're here today for, to ask to help with the cost of the reefs and the boats.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Do we have a printout? I don't have anything on the non-departmental, other than the email.
It's in the budget, in the budget binder that you have?
Yeah, but you couldn't find anything in there.
It's hidden under binder part.
It's going to be the next to the last tab, I think, George.
I know, I saw that.
So, we're good?
Okay, got it. I don't think anybody has any questions. Thank you, Ms. Richardson.
We'll see y'all in December.
Thank you. Anybody else on my left, your right? Yes, ma'am. And when you come up, please state your name so we get it for the record and the clerk. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm looking for it, too.
There's nothing in here, Fofo.
My name is-
Excuse me, just for a minute.
It's mine. That's what it looks like blank.
Is there any-
Non-departmental is third on the last.
I got it.
I got it. Keep going. There you go, right there.
If there ain't no salaries, then I don't have one.
You have one, Kenny?
Yeah, right here.
David, you have a copy of that? Okay, okay. Anybody else lack a non-departmental or is it just George?
I want you to make, we sound like-
I'll make you one. They're going to make you one. Okay. All right, I'm sorry, go ahead. Please, your name and your organization.
Yes, sir. My name is Cynthia Chauvin. I'm the director of CASA of South Mississippi. I want to first thank you all for the opportunity to speak a little bit about the work that we do and to go over the request for funding for this upcoming budget year. While the city of Biloxi has had a history of supporting our work with abused and neglected children, I want to give you some additional information as to why it pertains local government funding as a, as really an invaluable asset to our organization. As a 501(c)(3) nonprofit who serves the abused and neglected children of Harrison, Hancock, and Stone Counties, we perform a unique volunteer service that is solely administered through judicial court appointment of the Harrison County Youth Court Judge. We serve at the pleasure of the youth court, we being my CASA volunteers, and their work as independent fact-finders and gatherers of facts for the court through visiting with children in their foster homes or with their relative placements most definitely affords the judge the most fullest picture of these children's unique situations. We work in tandem with CPS, but we're an independent arm of CPS. We are independent of the court and my volunteers are actually sworn officers of the youth In the last quarter alone, my volunteers in Harrison County have donated over 1,000 hours of volunteer service on behalf of the children in foster care in Harrison. As of today, 249 children are in foster care in Harrison County alone. At this point, we are able to be able to serve 105 of those children. I have a personal goal along with my board of directors to be able to serve 100% of those kids. The funding request that I have before you is an opportunity to help us with recruiting, training, and supporting these volunteers. These are all laypeople. These are not social workers and these are not lawyers. These are people like you and I who are parents and grandparents, business owners and workers in businesses who are very passionate about the safety and protection of children. Our current budget of, as an agency, relies heavily on state and federal funding. Grant funding is comprised, our budget is comprised of approximately 50% based on grants. We have fundraisers and we have donate, donors in our community who gravely keep the doors open every year. At this point, about 5% of our annual expenses income comes through local government contributions like the city of Biloxi. To become a volunteer, it involves screening and training that comes at a cost. It involves continuing to support these volunteer laypeople. And I just want to give you for the next 30 seconds or so, some reasons why it's a small investment for the local city of Biloxi. Research has shown that children with a CASA volunteer are more likely to be permanently placed. That means they're not going to stay in foster care as long when they have an independent advocate speaking up for them in the court proceeding. It has also shown that children that have a CASA volunteer are less likely to re-enter foster care once their case closes. That's really important to a local city because these are going to be the future taxpayers of the city, the people who have the highest potential to be productive members of the city. And what we know is that children that do not achieve a safe and permanent home, they enter on the backside of things as adults who are largely our homeless population as well as those who are at high risk for incarceration. So, having a CASA volunteer is really a testament to not preventing the abuse, but hopefully changing the course of the trajectory of their life so that they have the opportunity to be productive adults who raise kids that are not in the foster care system. At this point, we are asking for your consideration and supporting the need for more volunteers in Harrison County. The request in, that is proposed as $10,000. We simply must be able to provide every abused and neglected child in Harrison County a CASA volunteer. And I thank you all for your thoughtful consideration of the request and I'd ask, if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Sure. Did a good job. Hang on just for a moment. Any questions from anybody? Council? All right. Thank you, ma'am, very much.
Thank you.
Let me mix it up a little bit. Anybody on my right, your left wish to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Douglas Schmidt. I came this morning on one important issue that's a, that's considered a non-departmental issue and that's with our library systems. I know every year, we kind of go over different budgetary cuts and things like that and I'm just here to remind the council of the importance of our library systems. I don't speak just on behalf of myself. I speak on behalf of my wife who is an MLIS at the University of Southern Mississippi in Long Beach. Just to kind of remind before we get to that point, just how important these systems are, how they should be viewed as a public service and not necessarily a source of profit, things of that sort. So, I'm just here to remind you of that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. I believe we have some other folks in the library here as well. Let me go again. Anybody on my right, your left? Good afternoon, Ms. Riley.
I'm Stacy Riley. I'm the CEO of Gulf Coast Center for Nonviolence, here to talk to you a little bit about what we have on our to-do list as an agency who provides life-saving services to anyone who's been affected by domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking, and homicide. And I know that I sent you all a document that contains the services and the individuals that we served in 2023 that are from the city of Biloxi and that was 3,500 services to 1,294 citizens of Biloxi. That's a lot of people in our small area here that who've been affected by trauma and that's only a snapshot of the people in our community here who have experienced trauma. So, what I wanted to talk to you a little about, I know that you can see in the, what I sent out to you guys recently that I asked for a little extra money this year. And the reason for that is we have, we're on the cusp of opening a family justice center and I know I've been here talking to you guys about this already. The family justice center is going to be designed to be a one-stop shop for anyone who's been affected by the trauma of interpersonal violence to come in and get help immediately, not just from our agency, but from other agencies in our area. Now, with that, you guys may know that the Harrison County Board of Supervisors have given us a space to use for our family justice center and that is the old youth court building on, in Gulfport. And so, this will be, they've given it to us to use in paying some of our operating expenses, but it will not cover the services that we have to provide out of there. So, we need assistance from all of our entities here to assist us with that because one of the things that we are going to be able to do as a service provider is to not only bring the state's first family justice center to the Gulf Coast, but also we are working hard to open a forensics medical clinic and that clinic will be staffed by medical professionals. It will be part of our family justice center and it will provide forensic examinations for sexual assault and domestic violence victims. We are seeing a significant number of people come into our services who have been victims of strangulation as a result of their domestic violence incidents. And we don't have the infrastructure here to provide the adequate evaluation and medical examinations for domestic violence victims who have been strangled. There are significant medical problems that come out of that, including traumatic brain injury. So, in the next year, what we as an agency will be able to do is open a fully functioning forensics medical clinic to provide these life-saving services to individuals and also to increase law enforcement's ability to, to investigate the crimes and also to present them to the district attorney's office to provide a higher rate of prosecution for violent offenders who have strangled their, their victims. We have a lot of support by the law enforcement here who, who work very well with us to do this and this is something that we can present and provide a higher level of, of service. And then on top of that, too, I've asked for a little extra money to provide access to services for our shelter program. The majority of people that we serve from the city of Biloxi are coming through courts and coming through our shelter. And so, we know that as we get further into doing the forensics medical clinic as our family justice center project, we will be able to increase, significantly increase the number of people that we see coming through shelter because we're going to put a highlight onto the, the issue of domestic violence and the need for elevated services. So, that's, that's the presentation I have for you today is, is asking you for assistance and allowing us to significantly increase the amount of services and the type of services we are able to provide to anyone who's been affected by the trauma of interpersonal violence.
Couple of questions. Ms. Riley, the Community Development Block Grant, you're going to be a recipient for this next year, correct? That's for $20,000. That's for the Women's Center for Nonviolence.
That is for, specifically for our preschool program and children under the age of eight who were residing in our shelter.
Okay. And somehow I missed whatever you sent us. I didn't get, that may be on my end. Are you requesting, what amount are you requesting for the Women's Center for Nonviolence?
So, a total of $50,000. It will be $30,000 for the shelter program and $20,000 for our family justice center project to assist with that forensics medical clinic.
Any other of my colleagues have questions? Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Appreciate the work that you do. You've kind of highlighted the strangulation injuries. Currently, what happens when somebody has that type of injury? They're referred to medical hospital or what happens there?
Possibly there are some, there are signs that happens, like it's not all, not all domestic violence victims seek assistance through law enforcement and not everybody understands the impact on the, the medical impact. So, if they are referred and there, and there's no conversation and they're about a strangulation occurring, then there's not the, the knowledge there to perform a higher level of, of care for that individual. And then we, we lack the, the personnel in our community that is specifically trained to provide forensic examinations. We have medical professionals, but they're not forensics medical professionals. So, they're not going to hospitals, they're not going to doctors, and they're not going to places that can help them. But if we have this on the front end, whenever that law enforcement responds or they come into our services, we can get the individual to that medical clinic to provide that, that examination and provide adequate care for them in that case.
So, let me understand the structure of this as far as specific to strangulation injuries. Would that be something in your clinic or would it be outsourced or a combination of both?
It would be inside our clinic. It will be a program ran by the Gulf Coast Center for Nonviolence.
And that would require staff or how many?
We would have a, a medical director who would be a nurse practitioner who has a medical doctor attached to her services already. We would have a forensics, a registered nurse who is also specifically trained to be a forensics medical examiner who would be able to provide the same examinations for sexual assault victims and the forensic examinations for the strangulation victims, including the purchase of the equipment that's necessary to be able to perform these higher-level examinations. And then we have a medical assistant.
So, the, the expenses related to the additional equipment and those needs, is that covered by this ask or is that something you have to find another source for, for those assets?
So, the, running the program will be a significant cost to us and we have, we have written grants to assist with this. There's no guarantee we get those grants, but also, too, every grant that we receive has a match requirement. So, we, they give us $100,000 of their money, we have to come to the table with $20,000 of ours. So, the, the ask from the city of Biloxi as well as the other jurisdictions will be able to help us with that match and to buy equipment that the, that the grant won't purchase.
Last question. Where's the, where'd you get the idea at? Is there a model? Is there another city that maybe you got this idea that you're going to emulate?
Yes. So, we have been working closely with New Orleans Family Justice Center who have been in place since 2006. They have, they operate a forensics medical clinic and they do a significant number of cases. So, their forensics nurse practitioner will be coming here and their staff there are assisting us with, with getting our program in place, making sure we have the policies and procedures and the standard operating procedures to be able to operate this. So, we're doing it from a well-informed standpoint as well as working with the Alliance of Hope International who are the ones who wrote the, the project for our family justice center.
And I'm sorry, I got one last question. I may have missed this in your presentation. Are y'all tracking the number of related injuries, to strangulation-related injuries? Are y'all tracking a number that you see each year?
We're tracking, we have just started with doing the danger assessment and gathering more meaningful data to the number of individuals who are seeking services with us who have, who have disclosed strangulation there. We can't track the injuries because we don't have that medical piece yet.
Okay.
But we're working towards that with this project.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Shoemaker? Anything? McGilvery? Ms. Newman?
I do.
Gines? Mr. Lawrence?
We didn't get a request from you. When'd you come up with this idea of $50,000? I don't have anything here. Does state say anything what you're saying? Who are you listed under as a nonprofit?
This Gulf Coast Center for Nonviolence.
Okay, that's domestic violence. That's this one?
Mm-hmm.
You requested $20,000.
$20,000 for the-
And $5,000.
-Community Development Block Grant. I'm asking for 50 out of this, the city's budget.
That was last year.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we had, we were dealing with somebody.
We just, we just don't have the request as, well, for now.
I emailed the request to everyone about three weeks ago.
It just hadn't been updated yet.
We're trying to maintain what we have. Coming with $50,000 more, that's, that's pretty sporty for something I'm not really familiar with. I know what you deal, y'all do great work and stuff like that, but, you know, we're trying to hold on to what we have. So, plus $50,000 more is a lot.
If you don't ask, you can't receive, right?
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Riley. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Pennell in the back? I believe you're the lady who was eagerly rushing the council moments ago. Any real questions?
Want to do the right thing, thank you.
Hadn't updated it yet.
Good afternoon. My name is Kelly Pennell and I'm here representing the Hibernia Irish Society. Here to, would like to thank you for letting me speak towards funding for our St. Patrick's Day Parade and our Irish malarkey. You may not know, but it used to be called the Hibernia Irish Marching Society. I believe our beginnings go back to 1977 when several Irish gentlemen meeting at Mary Mahoney's, cocktails may or may not have been involved, decided that they wanted to celebrate their Irish heritage. Hence, the marching part, started the parades in the parking lot of Mary Mahoney's and we've evolved a lot since then. We have thousands that attend our parade each year, not just from our city, but the entire Gulf Coast, state, other states. And also, I've even spoken to people that come from other countries. It's a family-friendly parade. We've also added in the last couple of years, we call it the Irish malarkey. This is a pre-parade, after-parade event, also very family-friendly, offer activities for childrens. We hire local entertainment, local food vendors, and local food trucks. Other cities, rumor has it, Pasquale may be Gulfport, may be attempting to begin a tradition such as this, but I think maybe we can all agree that we would like to keep Biloxi as the hub of all things Irish in March on the Gulf Coast. We've heard, especially if you've been around a while and attend Mottawarra parades, that parades are the greatest free entertainment on earth. But that's only half true, isn't it? Because it's only free for the spectators, but somebody has to come up with the money. And so the Hibernia Irish Society, we humbly and respectfully ask that you help us fund these two events. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you, Kelly. Good to see you. Yes, sir, in the back.
Good afternoon. My name's Greg Crochet. I'm with the Harrison County Soil and Water Conservation District. Last year, the city gave us $5,000. This year, we're asking for 7,000 because of inflation. We are involved in conservation education. We do several different projects throughout the county as a whole, but this past year we've done several here in Biloxi, some of them on Keesler Air Force Base, some of them with the Boys and Girls Club, tree plantings with the school systems. And we would like to ask for this additional funding to continue our work.
Any questions in the council?
I have a question. What other sources of income are you getting your funding from? What other sources, cities, county, grants?
We get funding from Gulfport. We get it from the county. We get it from Pass Christiane, Long Beach, and DeIverville.
Okay. And are you asking for an inflationary increase from those entities as well?
Yes, sir. We are for all of them.
How much?
Well, we're asking, like I said, we're asking for 2,000 in addition here.
How much from the other cities?
I think DeIverville, we're doing the same. DeIverville does pay us the same, considering, let's see, Pass Christiane, I think we're not asking that much, but they don't pay us as much. They pay us like $2,500 a year. And we're going to ask for an increase for the county, too.
And you didn't mention Gulfport?
Yes, sir. Gulfport's in there. Gulfport pays us 15,000 a year. We're, I think we're going to hold with Gulfport.
Good. Any other questions?
Yes. What about Keesler Air Force Base? I didn't hear any grants. Do you have any outside grant, federal grants that are coming in with you?
We work closely with NRCS, Natural Resource Conservation Service, and with that, in addition, we share the same office. We do a hand-in-hand with them, basically. Last, I think, yeah, it was last year, we had did a workshop for all the engineers in the cities and in the counties come forth to look at a different program that we have through NRCS, which is the emergency watershed projects. And that can be substantial money towards the city if, you know, it's got to meet certain criteria. But I think it was about four years ago, I think Gulfport had close to $600,000 that they had gotten in that kind of grant funding.
Gotcha. And you also mentioned Keesler Air Force Base.
Yes, sir.
Have you asked the military?
No, sir, we haven't. And that's...
Since it's part of your, within your wheelhouse?
Yes, sir. We do, we have done some work on Keesler, but we never, to be honest with you, never really thought about asking Keesler. That will be taken into consideration.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Lawrence.
How'd the city benefit last year from that money? The city of Biloxi?
City of Biloxi, right.
City of Biloxi.
Yes, sir. We did some work with the Boys and Girls Club. We did some work at Keesler. We do a teacher's workshop, which is where we bring in teachers from all over the county and Biloxi included in that. That's a three-day program. We pay for their CEUs and of course with that, you know, we got meals and we also bring in presenters from throughout the state to make presentations. And that's for them to help develop curriculum to go into their classrooms. We bring them out into the field. We work with different groups, the Nature Conservancy, the Land Trust, Coastal Plains Land Trust. We work with the 4-H Clubs. We work with the Extension Service. We work with NRCS. We'll work with the Forest Service. We've worked with several different agencies, all of them that deal with conservation practices. And mainly, we work with landowners, too. In addition to that, we try to help them get into programs that'll help benefit conservation. And it may be prescribed burning. It may be cattle grazing. We do cross fencing. We do riparian fencing where we actually build a fence off of the creek or the river to keep the cattle out of the creeks and the streams, too.
When you say you work with the Boys and Girls Club, exactly would you, you just went there and talked to them or you bring them out in the field?
I'm sorry. Did you say?
I said the Boys and Girls Club, you said that, which is actually in DeIverville. But I mean, what do you do when you go to the Boys and Girls Club? Do you take the kids out on the field?
Let's see, conservation education programs in public and private schools in Biloxi School District, as well as after-school programs for the Boys and Girls Club of Biloxi and Keesler Air Force Base. I can get, they have somebody that actually did some of the work right here, if you would like me to call her for.
All right. So you dealt with all those organizations, which is Biloxi High, those schools. That's what I'm looking for, where we benefit, the city of Biloxi. We're sending their taxpayers' money.
Yes.
Need a benefit for the city.
Yes, sir. For instance, we did a tree planting with the elementary students at Back Bay Elementary. And, you know, we'll do different things like that. A lot of it, what we do is we reach out to the teachers throughout the year, all over the county. And, you know, the cities are included. When I say the county, I'm talking about the cities, too. We reach out to them and we ask them if there's something we can do for them. And sometimes it may be a conservation program where they come in and they teach them about pollinators, butterflies, and bats, and things like this. And then on top of that, what we'll also do in addition to that is we'll come in and we'll actually, if the teacher would like to put in a garden, we'll actually work with them on a garden. And we'll, you know, we'll pay for the seed, we'll pay for the bedding, we'll pay for the tools. We'll bring somebody in, usually through the Extension Service, or we'll do it ourselves. We also have a representative with NRCS that'll do that. And we bring them in and we sit the kids down, we talk to them, tell them about what we're fixing to do, why we're doing it. We teach them nutrition, why they want to be eating good wholesome vegetables and things like that. And then we plant a garden for them, and they keep that, they maintain that garden throughout the school year at the school.
I watched that a couple of different times on TV where they had the kids planting everything by the school. So that's y'all teaching them how to do that.
Yes, sir. There's several groups that are doing that we work with, but that's one of the things that we'll also do that in addition to that, too. And a lot of it is upon the request of the teacher, and that's kind of where the teacher workshop comes in, too. When we bring these teachers in, they come from all over the county and the cities. And like I said, we have them for three days. We go through a gauntlet of things. We may bring them out into DeSoda National Forest, and we may scope a gopher tortoise hole and show them how we identify if this is an occupied borough. We'll have some other teachers come in and teach them how to do on-hands projects within the classroom that help benefit conservation so they can teach that to the students. Not last, it was last year, I think it was, we built a bunch of bluebird boxes, you know, showed them how to, real simple, real cheap. Here you go. This is how you build a bluebird box. We made them build their own bluebird boxes. And that's something that they can bring back to the classroom.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Glavin, you had a question?
Yeah, kind of follow up on a couple of things, listening to you. You said Gulfport was able to get 600,000 in grants?
Yes. Well, it's one particular program. Yes, sir.
Okay. So switching gears to Biloxi, what has Biloxi been able to get in grants by participating in this?
This is a particular, the EWP is the Emergency Watershed Program. This program comes through the federal government, USDA. NRCS, which is Natural Resource Conservation Service, I know there's a bunch of acronyms.
No, I understand that, but just cut through the chase. 600,000?
600,000. Okay. What has to happen is if we have to meet certain criteria. You're working on a project or you have a culvert that's doing fine. We get over four inches within a 24-hour period. It looks like the culvert's fixing to blow out. That's going to be critical to the road system here. We call up NRCS. They come down, they look at it, and then once they look at it, they work up the deal. And each individual project is going to be different. That blown, that future possible blown-out culvert, what we're trying to do is we're trying to prevent that from happening.
I understand that, sir, but you had a number for Gulfport. They were able to get 600,000. Biloxi, zero? How much?
We have never, we haven't had a request from Biloxi. If we did, it was years back.
And I understand that element of it, but I just wanted to know, did Biloxi get any return yet?
No, sir.
And the answer's no, not yet.
No, sir.
But the opportunity, you're saying, is there?
Yes, sir.
There were several years where there just wasn't a request made and you were doing your work without the city providing anything.
Yes.
And, you know, now we are. So that's good. Are there any in this fiscal year coming up? Are you adding staff? Are you adding increase in salaries, benefits, anything like that?
We've currently kind of gone through a restructuring. We have one person that works for us. We have a board that we're all volunteer. Everything else is volunteered. And what happened, what happened basically with what we were doing, we were funded tax-based, basically. After Katrina, we lost an employee because we had no set aside money whatsoever. Well, with losing that, we ended up keeping, we had one employee, and we've managed to keep one employee on hand. And so with that said, we would like to increase our staff, but we just don't have funding for that.
Just my last comment, and this is not to be adversarial at any rate. You mentioned there was another city that contributes 15,000 for at least a $600,000 return. I don't think it would be reasonable to ask them for a couple more percentage points, but that's a decision you'll have to make. I have no other questions.
Any other questions from council members? Thank you, Mr. Crochet. Mr. Williger, thanks for offering moral support.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you for having me. My name's Eddie Lofton, Athletic Director at Biloxi High School. Coming to you today in a request for some help with the tournaments that we host in the month of March. We've, nine years ago when I came here, I kind of realized that nothing like this was going on down here, and all of our teams from Mississippi were basically traveling out of state to be able to do something of this nature. So I started in the year 2017. We had 32 teams that we hosted, 18, 47 teams. 2019, 57 teams. In '20, we had 62. Of course, then we went through COVID, so in '21, we dipped back down to 49. But in '22, we had 64 teams. '23, we had 67 teams in this past year. '24, we had 70 teams. So the growth is there. The tournament is ran very well. Our surrounding cities help us out with that with being able to use all of our high school fields in the area. I've teamed up with MGM and the people there, the management team, and we're also using MGM Stadium. But it's getting harder and harder every year to try to keep this tournament growing because of the lack of funds that we have. In the past, we've gotten some different vendors that have been able to help us out, but in the times that we're in right now, some of them have kind of cut back on us. So that's kind of part of the reason that I'm reaching out to see if the city can help us with the funding on that. Some of the reasons are because of the economic impact that we do hold for Biloxi in that tournament. That was one of the big things that I wanted to do from the get-go. I bring in all these teams and we host this tournament. And during that, it's a 10-day span. It's basically from March 6th all the way through the 15th of this upcoming year, and it's around that same time every year. And we basically pack out a lot of our hotels, and then if you talk to our local restaurants and stuff, they all benefit from that during that week of time. It's also a great thing that we do for our boys. And now we've also, two years ago, when I became the Athletic Director, I also added a softball tournament as well, and we were up to 32 teams last year with our softball tournament. With the expansions and the things that we've done now at AJ Holloway Field, I think that will really, really grow and really, really benefit Biloxi in a big way. So again, thank you for letting me come today and plead with you a little bit about some support.
Any questions for Coach Lofton? Mr. Glavin?
I do. Coach, that's how everybody knows you. What's the name of the event again?
It's the Battle at the Beach.
Battle at the Beach. And I'm just doing a quick calculation. If you've got 70 teams and you've got another 30 in the girls softball, call it 100 teams, 14 or 15 people with coaches and all that kind of stuff, you're talking about 1,500, not including parents or grandparents or friends that are traveling. And I've spoken to Marcus Singleton. He was with Coastal Mississippi, he's now at Gulfport Sportsplex. And he says the economic impact is incredible, you know, from this. A 10-day event, somewhere around 1,500 people over a 10-day span, certainly they're going to eat and enjoy everything we have, and they're going to go back to these different cities that we're drawing from. You didn't mention some of those cities, but they're going to be word-of-mouth advertising for the beautiful Mississippi Gulf Coast and Biloxi. So I think this is an incredible return on an investment. Your only ask?
It's really, really growing. We're now, last year, we had a team from Naples, Florida. We had one from Houston, Texas. We had a team that came in from Oklahoma. It's really, really growing. The name is out there. Catholic High School out of Louisiana was the number-one team in the entire nation last year. That coach called me yesterday. They're going to be coming this year. Each year, we've had several people that were draft-worthy, and obviously the college and the scouting that comes during these moments, it's really big. And because I make the schedule out, I try to put a lot of those really, really good players at our home field. So it brings those people onto our campus at Biloxi High School, which is something that I've always tried to do because I want to exploit us as Biloxi as a whole. But we basically, probably about 75% of the teams are from an area that they would have to stay overnight. We looked at the economic impact last year. We probably sold well over 1,000 rooms during that 10-day period with the total of, especially, and that's really not even including the parents and what we know that they do. And that's, the rooms that we really try to push is, of course, Margaritaville, the Hyatt Place, Hampton Inn and Suites, the Doubletree, and South Beach Resorts. We try to push all of our Biloxi hotels first. I get with all those directors and they get us a, basically a flyer to be able to send out and kind of a special pricing for the tournament. And they basically call and give a code for that tournament, and we really pack it out. It's a great event, and we've been blessed, and it's, the return for us is we're probably at about 70% of the teams come back every year because they have such a good time. So it's a great event.
Anything else? How many staff members do you have?
At Biloxi?
That runs this event?
It's really me and just the Biloxi High School baseball staff. Now, I do have, we also host at Gulfport High School, at Ocean Springs High School, DeIverville. MGM helps us a lot. Of course, my staff runs that at MGM along with their management team. But the local high schools, whatever games they host, they handle their area. But as far as scheduling, as far as if we have rain, weather delays, or anything of that nature, my staff handles every bit of that.
No other questions?
Any other questions? Mr. Lawrence?
102-team tournament, a double elimination?
No, sir. The way we do it is all these teams, the spring break times are a little bit different and what these coaches are asking for a little bit different. So the way we determine a winner is they have to play a minimum of four games during the week. We do a strength of schedule, and then it's kind of on a point system. So some teams come in, they might play Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Other teams might come in and play Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. So it's all different, so it's not a double elimination. They just, basically, they call me, they give me the number of games they want, and tell me what days they want to play, and I just work it out.
How many fields does it take you to do? That's a lot of games.
The most that we've used is 11 fields so far. Yes, sir. And we usually start about 9:00 in the morning, and we'll start the last game about 7:30 that night on about four of our local, you know, kind of our bigger schools, their fields. on about four of our local, you know, kind of our bigger schools, their fields. The, the administration is very gracious to us to let our coaches out of the, the classroom on those days. And we get subs for them. That's part of the money that we use is to pay for their subs for those, for those days. But it's, like I said, it's just, it's, and now it's kind of taking care of itself. If you, if you go to a surrounding states and you ask them about the Battle of the Beach in regards to baseball and softball, they know where you're talking about.
Definitely a good event for a city of Biloxi to bring that many people in. That's a, that's a lot of people. Hundred, hundred teams is a lot.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Any other questions? Thank you, Coach Lofton.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all. I appreciate your time.
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to call you Ms. Crime Stopper. I've forgotten your name.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Lori Massey. I am the CEO of Mississippi Coast Crime Stoppers. I also serve on the State Advisory Board and on the National Board. We cover seven counties in South Mississippi, and we are the most active and best crime stopper program in our state. We have had a designation of distinction of having first in our state. And we continue to do projects with the first. We have a kiosk in the city of Biloxi in your Walmart. That's the first in our, in our state. Chief Miller and I and Chris Deback rolled that out during COVID. So we have five kiosks now on the, on the coast. And those kiosks have wanted people on there, have information on inclement weather, other nonprofit information. So when you're shopping in Walmart or in the DMV on Highway sixty-seven, you can see if one of your neighbors is wanted. I gave each of you a deck of playing cards. I, I know you haven't probably been able to open those, but those are the first in our state also. Those show missing and homicide, unsolved homicide cases and people who have not been either recovered or found. We were able to receive a grant from Season of Justice for twenty-five hundred decks. And all of those cards are going into jails in our seven-county coverage area in hopes that inmates will play with those cards. They're, they're free to the inmates, and they will have information on any of those cases, and they will call Crime Stoppers. The wardens are not recording those phone calls if an inmate has information, and they contact Crime Stoppers. Already, we've received several tips.
Like that?
Yes, sir.
See the pictures on the back of them?
So they're, they are unsolved cases in our seven county. And if you can, if you will look on there, Harrison County, you know, encompassing Gulfport, Biloxi, has many cases. We are very fortunate to have a great working relationship with law enforcement. And how law enforcement use Crime Stoppers is when they can't identify someone that's committed a crime, often they contact Crime Stoppers. They may send us an email. Just in the past month, just to prove how many man-hours we help save law enforcement, I received a, an email from law enforcement that asked, can you post this person that needs to be identified? In twenty minutes after posting, we had his ID. And Harrison County went and arrested him. We also received, later on, we received his location. In Pascagoula, this past month, we received information within one hour on someone who had committed credit card fraud. And Pascagoula went and arrested her. So how many man-hours can we save law enforcement there in turn save your city? Do you have any questions for me? I will say that we are in Biloxi High School. They're like our pilot high school program where students can give information. You know, most students like to talk to their SROs. You have really great SROs. But there are students out there that don't feel comfortable going to their SRO when they can contact Crime Stoppers and remain anonymous. Because with, with Crime Stoppers, that is our number-one priority is keeping that tipster anonymous, whether they're a student or whether they're an adult.
Any other questions for Ms. Massey?
That's a pretty neat idea. I don't know if I'd play brewery with them calls, but I'm interested in that.
Thank you, Ms. Massey.
Thank you very much.
For putting up with Mr. Lawrence.
Well, we did have, our rollout for the, for the playing cards was at the Biloxi Visitor Center. And we were featured in CBS News, social media, and twice in News Nation. So this, this really went viral. We didn't expect this. It's, it's been very good. And today, I'm going on W L O X to talk about these cool cases.
Thank you, Ms. Massey. Anybody on my right, your left, Mr. Coggin? And Mr. Braden.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I'm Jeff Braden, and I'm one of the city-assigned commissioners on the board at CTA. So I'm, I've had to speak in the past in, in Kevin's absence. So, and I wanted a chance to meet the, the two new councilmen. So I decided to come with you.
Thank you, Mr. Braden. Thank you, council members and mayor and staff for having us today. I'm going to start with the financial request first and then talk about some demographics, about your people we're carrying, the impact we're having in your community, and some things we're doing with new equipment. So when we were here two years ago for 2023 fiscal year, we asked for a substantial increase. And we appreciate you helping us with that very much. Got us back to pre-COVID funding levels. During that budget workshop, you asked us, and we committed to you, that we were going to increase self-generated revenue and try to avoid coming back and asking for increases year to year. And I'm happy to report, we, we've been able to do that. You gave us three hundred ninety-five thousand dollars in 2023. Last year, we asked for three hundred ninety-five thousand. We increased self-generated revenue, increased fare box revenue, did a fair increase in advertising revenue. This coming year, next year, 2025, we're asking for a little bit of a decrease, three hundred ninety-two thousand seven hundred thirty-five dollars. So I'm happy to report, we're asking for a little less than what we asked for last year. We were, we were able to accomplish this, overcoming inflation by increasing our fare box revenue. We're projected next year to increase our fare box revenue eleven percent, thirty-five thousand dollars, lease-based income at the Transit Center, twelve percent increase, nineteen percent, and a advertising revenue increase of eighteen percent, increasing thirteen thousand two hundred dollars. So we're projecting to increase self-generated revenue sixty thousand dollars. And that, that's our approach going forward. We know you all, the city, faces financial struggles every year. There's only so much money. And there's a lot of people here today asking for help. As proof of that, you're very generous. You've been generous with us. We take your money and we leverage that with federal dollars. Our federal and state grant dollars next year is going to be one million one hundred and six thousand. And our self-generated revenue is going to be five hundred eighty-four thousand. And we're asking for a subsidy of next year of three hundred ninety-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. I also want to make you aware that we have four brand-new trolleys being built in Wisconsin that are being paid for a hundred percent with federal money and state grant money. They're about two hundred fifty thousand dollars apiece. All four of those will serve Biloxi. You'll see those in the next couple of months. You'll see four brand-new trolleys. So we put a lot of effort into going out and getting as much federal, state money as we can. And, and we've been very successful with that and minimizing what we ask cities and counties for subsidies for. So we're, you know, I'll wrap up and answer questions. I'm happy to report, we're asking for a little less, not anymore.
Can I make a couple of comments?
Sure.
That were just related to?
Go ahead, Mr. Braden.
One thing you may or may not realize is every dollar that we raise in net revenue is one dollar less that we need from the cities to act as the local match for these significant amount of, of grants that we have. So that's the only avenue we see to be able, over the long term, to maintain the, the level of funding that, that you've been so kind to give us. The second comment is, in case you weren't aware, the, the trolleys that he's talking about are primarily serving the casino hopper route. And needless to say, that's primarily a, a Biloxi support.
Okay. Any questions?
I appreciate y'all taking the suggestions. Last year, I learned at twenty-two hundred. You got us the big one, Esther. You dropping money here. I love that, you. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
That's good enough. Hey, I feel good now.
Well, hold that thought.
I gotta say something.
Go ahead, Mr. Glavine.
Mr. Coggin, I gotta say something. See, you and I, in these meetings, have had some spirited conversations and about raising fares and advertising. Thank you. I mean, I'm, I'm going to just say thank you for y'all's taking a proactive approach and doing that, reducing the cost. As you see, most of the ask are either level or, or they're asking for increases. And that, that's good to see. But did you say you, you increased dollar-for-dollar sixty thousand dollars? So that, that's sixty thousand dollars less that, that we can?
We increased our?
I, I know what it is. I was just giving, I had, I had to take one little dig.
We had to pay for the, the increased cost on spare parts.
The cost of doing business went up. So we compensated with self-generated revenue.
Yep. In addition, your leadership in the community. I attend hotel motel meetings, and y'all always have a representative there keeping the industry up to date on what's transpiring, whether it's the crosswalk or the, the, the crosswalk over in Gulfport by the aquarium, or whatever new technology is coming down. So stay on top of it. Let's, let's keep increasing those fares if we can. And let's have a, a good year coming up.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions from the council? Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. Is anybody on my left, your right? Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Angela.
I'm Angela Griffin. I'm the administrator with K O P C Workforce Development, located eight-hundred division sheet right here in Biloxi. I've asked my husband, Michael Griffin, to join me. Michael just got out of the hospital, so bear with him if he's moving a little slow, but it's important for him to be here today. K O P C Workforce Development, that K O P C, that acronym stands for the Knights of Peter Claver, which is a Catholic faith-based order. K O P C Workforce Development is a organization that serves individuals ages eighteen to fifty who are wanting to move into the construction industry. They are low-to-moderate-income individuals who are wanting to acquire skills in the entry-level field to acquire basic levels of skills to move into the construction industry. I, I want to thank the council that you all have supported us over the years. K O P C Workforce has been here based in East Biloxi since 2018. You all signed a resolution with K O P C Workforce to do renovations, repairs for here in East Biloxi with Henry Beck Park. And we've been continuously doing that with our students. Our students are low-to-moderate-income individuals. Our whole priority is built around economic security. But also, there's another level where our individuals are required to give back to their communities. So we've been very, very successful with your monies by making sure that those students are civically and community-engaged, as well as doing those necessary repairs in East Biloxi. We're here today because we've been asked by the Director of the, of the Recreation Department, Ms. Bale, to now move toward Bush Park to do those renovations. So we can continue our effort in John Henry Beck Park, but also, we're going to continue to do what we can in Bush Park. And Michael can give you some updates in terms of what's been done already in John Henry Beck Park.
I'm Michael Griffin, Program Director of K O P C. We started out with Beck Park, doing just, addressing the safety issues there. Quite a few of them with the steps and playground equipment, that type of thing. So we started with the main house there. We've, we've done electrical wiring, repaired some of the rooms in there where squirrels had gotten into that. So we repaired that, painted out the front porch. We replaced all the spindles. We built new steps for the entry on it. This last class, we started on Pop's Pavilion, which is one of the two that we're working on now. And we're about ninety percent, ninety-five percent complete on it. We repaired the roof. We added a new tin. Some of the plywood had, had arrived because of the water licking through the roof. We repaired that. We painted the roof, painted Pavilion, repaired some of the tables in there and painted those as well. Now, we're starting to do Clara's Provision, which is the one right in front of Main House. We completely replaced all of the handrails in there, painted those, all the rotten wood that was there. So we're about sixty percent complete on that. We still got to do the roof and some additional painting and a handicap ramp. We also moved to Bush Park this week and take care of the safety issues there first. And then we'll continue that probably in our next class. So we get a chance to give our students the opportunity to do OJT, and it also benefits the city. So between classes, we're able to get the students out there that graduate to do the work. Some volunteer, some we, we give a stipend. And, and that's a big part of the stipend. So the additional funds that we're requesting will go for the stipend. We probably use maybe ten percent for administrative costs, but the rest is, is going into the park. The arrangement we have is the city bought the materials, and we provide the labor. We also are working now in Bayou August. We started Bayou August probably four years ago. We worked with the Land Trust on that. We helped them put in the Nature Trail there. And it's all grown over now. So we, we're looking forward to also getting back over in that area. We also provide volunteer work for Back Bay Mission. We work with the Aviation Museum, Mississippi Aviation Museum over in Gulfport. They requested that we build some display tables for some of their displays over there, and we've done that. So we appreciate the support, and it's given us an opportunity to do some things that we would not have been able to do without your support.
I just want to add that I don't, recently, we received some segments on W L O X of the work that's been done in Henry Beck Park. Not only that, W X X V was present to see the work done in the city of Biloxi. And most recently, I did an interview with Supertalk, which is a radio station in Jackson, where they were very impressed of the work that was done in the city park of John Henry Beck Park. So the city is getting some recognition of what it is that K O P C Workforce Development is doing in those parks.
Yes, ma'am. And you're requesting an allocation of twenty thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars, yes.
Any questions from the council?
Yeah. Y'all tied into Saint Peter Claver, Knights of Columbus?
The Knights of Peter Claver. That's the organization, yes.
Okay. So that's the same, we give them ten thousand. So this is the same group?
Same group.
Same group. Y'all just x-ing for, to combine to be twenty thousand?
Yeah. They're asking for it.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I knew they both, they did a lot of good work. So.
So much.
Mr. Gans?
Yeah. And I just want to thank you guys for what you guys have done. Because, you know, today, a lot of the parks are under scrutiny. And you guys, some of our parks at Henry Beck Park and now Bush Park, never made the list because of you guys. And so I appreciate all the work that you guys have done over the past two, three years. I'm, I'm just so impressed. And just continue with the great work. Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Griffin. My right, your left? Yes, Mrs. Crohn?
My right, your left, yes, Ms. Cron. David Cron, Ms. Cron.
Robin Cron, David, with the Executive Director of the Maritime and Seafood Industry Museum. I just wanted to come today to thank y'all all for your past support and for your continued support. We are not asking for an increase, just continue what we presently had last year. I sent y'all all an email of a letter that I had sent to the mayor, and I'm hoping you received that email. I also would like to ask and invite everyone, I think I've sent y'all all emails also, Saturday, we are having the rededication of the Hurricane Camille Memorial. We have received the fundings. It took us two years to gather the funding, of which the city of Biloxi did help, in having the memorial relocated. The Redeemer sold their property on Highway 90, so we just felt a need to participate in seeing that it was moved. It is beautiful. So the event will be Saturday on the 55th anniversary of Camille on the museum grounds at 10:00 a.m. So I would like to invite everybody here to come out and participate in the blessing of the new memorial. And I would like to thank y'all all again for your support, and if you have any questions, I would like to answer them.
Any questions? Any questions? Thank you, Robin, very much.
Thank y'all.
Anybody else on my right, your left, Ms. Hunt? Now, Ms. Hunt. Ms. Hunt, let's be nice to everybody.
George, don't laugh.
Ms. Hunt, Mr. Glavine wants to know where his bread is. Okay.
When we vote, yeah, okay.
All right, Ms. Hunt, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much.
Anybody like to cross-examine, Ms. Hunt?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Anybody on my left, your right? Yes, sir.
A major.
Good afternoon. I'm Major Jerry Rock. I'm here in the Army Salvation Army. This is in the Gulf Coast, but today I'm here representing the Croc Center. You've supported the mission, worked with the Croc Center for a few years, and we would like to ask that you continue that support. I believe you received a letter from Laura, who's with us today, Laura Rock, stating that this past year we gave $23,000 in scholarships to the community. If you've not been to the Croc Center and you are missing out, we'd love to have you, and we will give you a crop quickly when you come and visit us. But we've started some new programs at the Croc, and we want all of those programs to be available to. Some of those programs are ESL and GED classes, and we recently received a resident.
Apologize for interrupting.
It should be on.
It's on.
Yeah, touch it.
How about that? Ah, there we go. Okay. So we've started some new programs, and we want those programs to be available to everyone in the community, and that's what our scholarships are all about. We've started ESL and GED classes, and we're excited to announce that we had a donor who gave us $100,000 to restore one of the old rundown buildings across the street where we're going to build a new pottery studio. And not only will that be available to the young people, but we've been in negotiations or working with the retired veterans at the VA. They want to bring veterans in to the Croc Center to take our pottery classes as therapy. But there are a lot of things that are available at the Croc Center that we want the community to have the ability to use, and we can't do that if we don't have scholarships for those who can't afford a membership. Now, those of you who are young enough don't know the history of the Croc Center. I'm gonna give it to you in a nutshell. I know you've got a lot to hear. But Joan Croc herself donated $1 million to Biloxi and said, "I want to build a Croc Center there." She handpicked this location. Every other Croc Center in the United States had to raise millions of dollars to put together an operating endowment. And because Joan Croc picked Biloxi herself, we did not have, this community did not have to raise that money. Our operations, what we call capital renewal, comes from the Joan Croc Foundation itself, so millions of dollars has been poured into this community, into this facility. But what we do have to do is pay for the operation of the building, the operation of our programs, the staff. And so by having to raise that money, we do have to charge membership fees. I wish we could say we've got a magic pot and everyone can come in for free, but that's not the case. So we do charge a membership fee, and if you can't afford that fee, then we will allow you to apply for a scholarship. And I'm gonna tell you, I've been here in this community for three years. We have never turned one person away from a Croc membership because they could not afford to pay. And that's because of this city council and the mayor and the city of Biloxi supporting us. Now, I know Laura said in the letter that she'd like to provide those for the residents of East Biloxi, but I'm gonna tell you, we have members from all over the city of Biloxi who participate in the activities of the Croc Center. So we're asking again for $20,000, which is what we've asked for for several years. We appreciate your time. Any questions that I can answer of you?
Any questions from the council?
No, I just think it, I think it's a worthy cause, and last year, for some reason, I think there was a mishap, a mishaps, but I would love for the council to consider weing up to $20,000. You do a marvelous job in the community. The last two majors, yourself and the last major, y'all have been tremendous in the community.
It's our pleasure. I tell you, this community is amazing, and if you've never been to the Croc Center, just stop by. We'll give you a tour. We'll introduce you to some members and tell you some stories that'll bring a tear to your eye and a smile to your face. So thank you for the opportunity.
I appreciate you opening up the doors and to the community.
It's exciting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Anybody else on my right, your left? Yes, sir. I swear, that looks like Mr. Monroe.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm here representing the Boom Boom Committee. We would like to ask you again, and thank you very much for your continued support for previous years, same amount of money as this coming year. We were able to put together a group of our sponsors, besides, you're one of the major ones, but we ended up shooting $41,000 in fireworks this past year. And our goal next year is to get it to 60. We've come up with a new program that we think we're gonna be able to get more donors and really make it a fabulous show for the city of Biloxi to celebrate our independence.
All right. Any questions from the council?
I think it's great that we keep putting fireworks. Everybody loves them. They think we do it, but we appreciate y'all raising most of the money.
We love you.
$12,000 we spent is great for the city of Biloxi.
Thank you so much. We appreciate all your help.
Any other questions from the council? Thank you, Mr. Monroe.
Thank you, sir.
Good to see you. Anybody on my left, your right? Yes, sir. Mr. Alexander, I remembered.
Thank you, sir.
You're quite welcome.
Good af, whoa, this is my first time. Good afternoon, council. My name's Mike, or, and mayor. My name's Mike Alexander. I'm the interim Biloxi librarian right now. Sarah sends her regrets. Her mom is very ill. She's in North Mississippi taking care of her mom. She sends her apologies. Also, please forgive my frog impression. I promise it's better than it was a couple days ago. Sarah sent a very nice presentation, and I'm prepared to go over it with you if you like, but at risk of going rogue, maybe I'll just say a few things that the library's doing, and then just answer any questions if I can. So the library, we've got eight locations in the county, four in Biloxi, and we're doing great. We've had about quarter million visitors this year. We had 400,000 items checked out. We had 40,000 programs, or attendees to over 2,000 programs. As you know, two years ago, we had a mobile outreach vehicle start up, and it's driving around the coast. It visits apartment buildings in Biloxi, and it attends festivals in downtown on the Green, and it shows up in movies in Gulfport. And, you know, we're happy, and we're trying to serve you guys. This year, we've asked for a small increase of $2,000 from last year. I know it's not as good as not asking for an increase, but, you know, we're trying to hold strong with what we've got. You know, it's been said that we need to think of things as a business, but, and I understand that to a degree, but we're a service. And while we do need to keep it within what we have, we don't make hamburgers and we don't sell, you know, Hot Wheel cars. So what we can do is provide service to your patrons and hope that they get value out of it. We, my first, 13 years ago, my first day on the job, I had to help an old-timer come in. He was really stressed out because he needed to, I don't remember if he was doing Social Security or taxes or something, but he needed an email address. He had no clue, so I sat down with him and made him an email address and got him what he needed. And that guy came in for eight years, and I haven't seen him in a while, but at least eight years, I saw him very regular, and we helped him out, and he was so thankful. Your Biloxi library right down the street has the local history collection, and that collection houses things that no one else on the coast has, no one else in the world has it. And our people are able to catalog those items and make them accessible for the public and for you guys when you come asking for, you know, Barks History or that sort of stuff. So, yeah, can I, what, how can I answer any questions?
Any questions from the council? This is a first.
You guys have made my day.
All right, mark this on your calendar, come back a year from now.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Appreciate that. Tell Sarah that we raked you over the coals. Okay, all right. Thank you. Anybody on my right, your left? Mr. Payne?
Good afternoon. I just want, I'm Kim Payne with Motor Vehicle For Hire. Just wanted to stop by and go over a few statistics from this year and some of the information that we've gathered from our permitting process. Guess I better put these glasses on, because I know I'm not gonna see without them. All right. As you are well aware, every March and April, we permit cars and companies. This year, we permitted 13 companies that are currently active and that each, or the, between the 13 companies, we have 84 cabs currently on the road. This year, we had a total of nine brand-new vehicles put on the road. Most of them with Z-Trip, who's currently the largest company on the coast. I'm not sure why I took that off. Let's see. Some of the more important things that we've done for the cities is, this year, we had eight permit denials for either drug screens, failed drug screens or failed background checks, and we actually had two people withdraw their permit request after finding out that they would be held to a certain standard. Let's see here. This year, on the budget request, we did have a slight increase, but it wasn't actually something we're asking additional for. It was due to the way that the interlocal agreement is written, that the city with the most fares, that's, you know, they pay a proportional share from top to bottom. That did go up. I think, if I'm not mistaken, the city of Biloxi went up 2% this year, which is a total of about $1,600. And that actually puts the city of Biloxi back on the top as the most traveled-to place of the three cities since before COVID. And that's all the information I have today. Is anybody having a question?
Question, Mr. Payne, just to be clear, because we have Uber and Lyft drivers, but the authority doesn't regulate them due to some sort of a.